By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. This evening I do have two announcements before we start. The first announcement is in reference to our Chief of Police. At this time, I would like to recognize Chief Michael Euler for his 30 years of service to the Borough of Conshohocken. Chief Euler is retiring on Friday, June 8th. We would like to thank Chief Euler for both his dedication and sacrifice to the Borough of Conshohocken. Second announcement is, if any of you who don't know this yet, AmerisourceBergen, a global healthcare solution provider, has selected Conshohocken as the new location for its national headquarters. Governor Wolf announced today that the state will be providing $1,659,000 in tax credits through the DCED and also an $8 million grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program to assist with this facility development and construction costs. As the governor stated, the decision is expected to create more than 550 new family sustaining jobs in the next five years and also spur the redevelopment and job creation in Conshohocken. I know I speak for all of us when I say that the borough is extremely excited for this opportunity. We are looking forward to partnering with the developers and AmerisourceBergen, a Fortune 550 company. In this venture, tonight, we would like to officially welcome AmerisourceBergen as our national headquarters. We know we are biased, but we know you will enjoy living, working, and playing in our borough as much as we do. Thank you. Okay, so, the first item on the agenda is consider preliminary final minor subdivision and land development approval for 322 East 8th Avenue with Conshohocken Construction, Mark Jones.
Good evening. Georgia Ozerowski, the applicant.
Good evening.
Madam President, if I could, I have prepared for Borough Council's consideration a resolution with respect to this matter. I'd like to read the resolution off for council, and then Mr. Ozerowski and his client are here to answer any questions that you may have. This is an application for land development for 322 East 8th Avenue. The application was filed with respect to a property that consists of 0.193 acres. It currently contains an 842-square-foot, single-family, semi-detached dwelling. The applicant proposes to remove certain stone walls on the property and to divide the property into two lots, one comprising 2,800 square feet, the other comprising 5,600 square feet. One of the lots will continue to maintain the semi-detached, single-family home. The other lot will be developed with a single-family detached dwelling comprising 1,145 square feet. The applicant received relief from your zoning hearing board on March 19th, 2018. That was, number one, from Section 27-1,005A to permit a lot width of 20 feet instead of the minimum required, 25 feet. A variance from zoning ordinance Section 27-1,005(c) to permit a front yard setback of the average setback on the street, which is 12.7 feet, instead of the minimum, instead of the front yard setback of the majority of the houses on that side of the block. And a special exception from zoning ordinance Section 27-811(c) to permit a 480-square-foot garage where the maximum permitted garage is 350 square feet. You'll note in the resolution that the applicant is requesting six waivers. A waiver under 22-302 of the SADO to permit simultaneous submission of final and preliminary land development. A waiver from Section 22-306.a.1 to permit a waiver of the requirement for a submission of features within 100 feet of the property and to instead utilize aerial photography. A variance, or a waiver from Section 22-409.2 to permit grading within three feet of the property. Line from Section 22-410.4j to permit the use of clean-out or yard drain connections for the roof leaders rather than an inlet or manhole system. From Section 22-421.4 to permit street trees within the existing seven-foot-wide grass strip. And from Section 22-804a to pay a fee in lieu instead of the dedication of park or open space. This matter was considered by your planning commission. The planning commission recommended approval subject to certain conditions. Set forth on page three of the resolution is the proposal for council to grant preliminary and final land development approval of the plan, subject to certain conditions, including the waivers as requested. The first condition is that applicant pay under Section 22-804a a fee in lieu of park and recreation facilities in the amount of $4,000. That the applicant comply with the Borough Engineer Review Letter, the Borough Zoning Officer Review Letter, the Montgomery County Planning Commission Review Letter. That the applicant provide landscaping to mitigate the visual impact of the accessory garage on neighboring properties. That the applicant draft a cross-easement agreement for my approval with respect to a driveway that goes over both lots. That the applicant execute a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement. That the applicant execute a land development and escrow agreement. That the applicant satisfy all outstanding invoices. And finally, that the applicant abide by the terms of the resolution itself. With that, this matter is ready for your consideration, and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
How are you handling the drainage in the back? I noticed it pools back there.
Well, it's going to be captured on site with a ground system. The engineer, everybody is going to do that.
Okay.
It's going to be on the new lot, where the single-family home is going to be, yeah. It's going to be an underground potential space.
So you're taking the existing garage down?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, because I'm not seeing a garage on these plans.
It's, if we had this on. Do you mind if I approach?
Yeah, it's on, George.
It's here. This is the new garage. This proposed garage. This will be the single-family home.
Yeah, got it.
This is the proposed garage.
Okay, I missed it. Right, here we go.
And that's what, that's part of the requirements that we put some landscaping around to ease up the buffering between them.
Is it two-car?
Yes. Hence the requirement of the zoning of the bigger size to fit two cars.
Yeah, because there isn't a whole heck of a lot of room off that alley.
I'm pretty sure that our engineer and the borough's engineer reviewed it, and they thought it was sufficient.
Adequate. Okay. And you're using purview's papers?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, so I know we're probably using purview's papers on this part of the existing.
Right.
But this part, I think, is going to be, it says it's going to be mechanical.
Okay.
Anyone else on council have any questions?
I'm a positive now. It sounds like you need houses now.
I was going to say, I will make that motion.
To approve preliminary and final.
I'll second.
We need a motion, yeah.
I made the motion to approve preliminary and final.
I'll second.
On favor?
Go ahead.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the adoption of the borough's comprehensive plan. Judy Stern-Goldstein, Voucher, and James, Inc. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I'll start by opening the hearing. If we could go on the record, please. This is the required hearing under Section 302 of the municipality's planning code for the consideration of an update to the borough's comprehensive plan. I have two board exhibits. B1 is the proof of publication. This hearing was advertised on May 14th and May 21st in the Times Herald. And B2 is going to be the PowerPoint presentation that is on the board in front of you and will be presented by Ms. Stern-Goldstein. With that, if I could please have Ms. Stern-Goldstein sworn.
You swear the testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Judy.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. Just a couple preliminaries. This is a hearing for the comprehensive plan. It's been an extensive effort to get to this point, and I'll take you through that journey through the PowerPoint. But it's important to note that before getting to this, there was a whole process with the comprehensive plan task force. Then, as I came to visit you in March, it was sent out for advertising. It has been advertised. We have sent it out for comments. We received comments from two of the four adjacent municipalities, those being White Marsh and Plymouth Townships. Both had very favorable things to say about the comprehensive plan. The other two, we did not hear comments from. We also did not receive anything back from the school district, who had it for the 45-day period. And just recently, we did receive comments from the county planning commission. It was beyond the 45 days, but giving it due process and due diligence, we will be working through those comments with staff and members of council just to vet those issues. And if any changes need to be done, we'll make those recommendations to you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to take you on the journey of the comprehensive plan right now. The first one is, what is the need for a plan update? You did have a comprehensive plan. The last one was adopted in 2007.
Judy, I'm sorry, can you just speak up a little?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Get a little closer. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. The last plan was adopted in 2007. The Pennsylvania municipality's planning code recommends that the update be performed every 10 years. So starting the process in 2017, you were right on time. The redevelopment at the lower end of the town has been completed since the 2007 update. And also, there have been demographic shifts in the borough, as you all know, by the increase in rental units and condo units and millennials in the borough. The intent of the plan was to set forth a common community vision for the future of Conshohocken and identify specific recommendations to assist in the planning and execution strategies and tactics that protect the quality of life, economic development, and the environment. Relevant issues that needed to be addressed include the changing economic structures, redevelopment and adaptive reuse, that's my favorite term for repurposing underutilized buildings and structures, need for adequate parking, a balance of residential and non-residential development, the balance is essential to your future, future capital improvements, and a desire for strategically located commercial uses to satisfy local market demands. Comprehensive Plan Task Force was formed last year. Representatives included Borough Council, Planning Commission, Borough staff, and local residents. The task force members included Tina Sokolowski, who was the chairperson, Anita Barton, Edgar Baz, Scott Granley, Judy Smith-Cresley, Brian Magren, Rita Montmore, Linda Mizraddis, Melissa Ciato, and Richard Smith. It was a well-balanced group. I'd like to say that one of the good points of the group was there was never just tacit agreement. There were good discussions, some almost heated discussions, but I think that led to a really, really good process. And there were definitely differing opinions as we went through the process, brought out a lot of issues. And it was an active group. Each ward had a representative, they met monthly, and the subcommittee was established to provide an opportunity for borough residents, property owners, elected officials, and volunteer board members to voice their opinions. Each member of the task force was selected because of their position within the community in representing a different constituency, if you would, from parents of children in school, parents active in the PTA, to those active in youth sports, EAC members, people of different backgrounds and skills. All task force meetings were open to the public. That was part of the public participation process. It's part of a comprehensive plan. Public participation is essential. This is, as I said in the beginning when I first interviewed with you, this is your comprehensive plan, it's not mine, so we need the public participation to make sure that it's representative of your community. We also had two special meetings, a public visioning meeting and a real estate forum, and the national citizen survey. The public visioning meeting was held at Washi's. It was October 19th of last year. We had approximately 30 people, and that was in addition to Borough Council members and task force committee members that were there. We put everyone to work. We used the nominative group technique, in which every person answered the questions. We wrote answers on boards, people got votes, they voted. There was a lot of discussion. We also had maps and boards up around the room. Several residents left us little sticky notes with comments. Some people just handed in other comments. In the comprehensive plan, every comment that was made at that meeting is recorded in the plan as part of an appendix. The participant responses included the good items, or their top priority on good items were, they like living in Conshohocken Borough because of low taxes and the small community feel. The responses on the negatives or cons were traffic and a lack of single-family detached homes. And I think that was a lack of availability of single-family detached homes. One of the things that, as we went through the process, you do have a lot of single-family homes. The good news is they're all occupied. The bad news for someone who wants to move in is that they're occupied. So by having long-term owners is a good thing, it's stable, but it's keeping people that want to move in from being able to move in, so it's a pro and a con. We also hosted a real estate forum, I should say, the borough hosted a real estate forum here in this room in November. And the intent was to listen to developers and realtors and see what their opinion is, what they need to see to make Conshohocken more marketable, if you would, for their purposes, for people that want to move in, or businesses that want to come in. Obviously, it's a good thing you're attracting people, and I was happy that that announcement came before the comprehensive plan. It shows that it is an active and vibrant community, and this, we're on target with what's being proposed in the comp plan. It was determined that for residential uses, people are looking for good schools, low taxes, and a preference for turnkey properties. By turnkey, I mean already renovated or just move-in-ready. For commercial, they're looking for a good population, or a good position in regards to the Class A office space. Right now, there's a very low vacancy rate. They see that as something positive. It's keeping market value up very high. Overall pros were access to transportation. It's a regional location, you can be in center of city very quickly. Variety of restaurants and local community events, all seen as something good and attracting people to the borough. Overall cons were the age of the housing stock and the low turnover rate, as I mentioned before. In addition, traffic and availability of parking. And a few people in the residential end were concerned with the permitting process. And I have to say that as the process went on, we did hear different things, and your borough staff has already implemented changes to deal with some of the minor comments that came up throughout the process, so it's been a vibrant and active period. The other part of the community input, public participation, was the national citizen survey. That utilized a separate group, and you authorized this to happen last year, and it happened or occurred in the month of August through October. Random sampling went out to 1,500 residents, and 443 completed surveys were returned to the borough. That represents a 30% return rate on the mailed surveys, which is astronomically high in the realm of surveys. In addition to that, the survey was available online for residents and business owners to fill out, and 115 additional surveys were completed online. So you did have more than a small random sampling. The headline news from the survey is that 95% of respondents rated the borough as either excellent or a good place to live. That's high, and that's the main takeaway from that survey. The full survey is an appendix to the document. Everyone can read that at their leisure, but this is the takeaway. For population and demographic changes or trends, this is interesting. Boroughs had a steady decrease or decline in population nearly every decade over the last 80 years, with the exception of the 10 years between 1940, 1950, and 2000 and 2010. Currently, right now, you seem to be in an upswing also, and you can see that the trend is continuing up. What we're seeing, basically, is that there was a lot of housing stock, and there were larger families living in that housing stock historically. Family size has shrunk, so there are less people living in the existing houses. There's been significant redevelopment down near the riverfront, but smaller household size. When you have one or two people living in households, it's much less than the three, four, or five of prior years. So let's see, between, oh, it's on the next slide. In the year 2040, Conshohocken is projected of a population of 10,567, which is a change of 21.4% from 2020, and a change of 33.9% from the 2015 estimate. But you can see from the chart, it's not really taken you much higher than historic numbers, so it's nothing to be afraid of. The issue is the number of households in Conshohocken increased by 483 from 2000 to 2015, which was a change of 14.5%. The number of people per household decreased by .47 persons from 2000 to 2015. So we're down to just 2.07 persons per household. And the number of families decreased by 550 households. You might wonder how the number of families decreased by so much? The Census Bureau has changed up some definitions. So a household, if I live in a condo or apartment by myself, I'm a household, but I'm not a family because two or more people are a family. So a household is the number of dwelling units. Families are the number of people for two or more. And the household size is all the people, related or not, living in that household. So a few things. It seems like, well, what happened to all of our families? They didn't disappear, it's just more homes with just one person. Overall, there's not much surprise in the rest of the demographics. Our school-aged population is 14.9% of the population. Our older population, which is 55 or older, and I object to the term 55 being old, but 55 or older is considered the age population. That's 21% of your population right now. And the total household units, 4,265, of which 1,952 were owner-occupied and 1,860 are renter-occupied currently. So we took all this information, and now this is getting small, I should just catch up on my iPad. Excuse me, one minute here. So we took all that information, and we developed guiding principles as part of the comprehensive plan. And each of the components that's required to be part of the comprehensive plan, as per the NPC, were included in your guiding principles. So the first is land use. The guiding principle for land use is to preserve and enhance the diversified mix of land uses to maintain a balance between growth and preservation. Housing has two guiding principles. The first is to provide diverse and affordable housing options to meet the needs of all households now and into the future. And the second guiding principle, retain and enhance the character of existing residential neighborhoods. That came out loud and clear throughout the process. For economic development, sustain and enhance the economic vitality of the borough while maintaining the historic small-town character and uniqueness. Community facilities, provide for appropriate and adequate community services and facilities within the practical fiscal limits of the borough, and also to preserve and enhance green infrastructure. For transportation, provide a safe transportation system which optimizes mobility and access, sustains quality of life, strengthens the economy, and protects the environment. And also, to improve the borough's infrastructure to support future demands. And finally, for natural and cultural resources, protect and enhance the natural, historical, architectural, and cultural resources within Conshohocken, and deepen public awareness and appreciation of these resources. Then we have several implementation strategies for each of them, and I'm not going to read them all, but for land use, there's a series of implementation strategies. And what I need to show you now is, as part of the comprehensive plan, there's a section from pages 105 through 119, and it looks like this. And it's basically a separate document inside the document. It's the action plan. I encourage it to be an active list, it's a task list, if you will. And it sets out, each goal has several objectives, each objective has several action items, and they include the priority and the responsible entity for each action item. Those action items are the checklist for Borough Council to use when you're going through your budgeting process, when you're setting your goals and objectives for each and every fiscal year from now into the future. You can look at this as a guiding document. You can also use it as a checklist. You can use it to develop future projects and costs for those projects, some of which, I have to say, have no cost at all, some of which may have significant cost. But this is the meat and potatoes of your comprehensive plan. It's also something that both the adjacent municipalities that did comment appreciated this. They liked that there's a task list. So each of these items are in there, but for land use, there's several implementation As there is for housing, community facilities and services, transportation and circulation, historic and natural resources. And if you'd like, I can go through more of them in detail. They're all here on the PowerPoint and available for public use. I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into tonight.
Thank you, Judy. At this time, it would be appropriate, should council have any questions, for Ms. Stern-Goldstein? Seeing none, at this time, we will open it up for public comment. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment with respect to the comprehensive plan as drafted, this would be your time to do so, and we welcome the comment. Let the record reflect that there were no residents who wished to speak. With that, members of council, as you are aware, the process for adopting the comprehensive plan is to adopt a resolution, which my office has prepared, was included with your packet. The resolution, in essence, really simply states that council is adopting the comprehensive plan. It lists out the contents of the comprehensive plan, and then it attaches the comprehensive plan as an exhibit. So at this time, is there anything else from council? Seeing nothing, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And if council chooses, it would be appropriate at this time to adopt a resolution approving of and enacting the comprehensive plan.
So I'm just going to jump in. Because we did receive the Montgomery County Planning Commission review on Monday of this week, I would urge council to push the actual adoption of the resolution to June 20th. That way, we're doing our due diligence and incorporating all of the reviews that we've received. It'll give staff a chance and council to work with our consultant to ensure that we are encompassing all aspects of those review letters into the comprehensive plan. And it will be on your agenda on June 20th, if you are inclined to do so, per that timeline, for formal adoption.
So we would table it tonight?
You don't have to table it, because you don't have to formally vote. You've had your public hearing, we've asked for public comment. We will now, we'll be informing you if that's the timeline you want to do for adoption on the 20th.
So just for transparency, what came back from Montgomery County Planning Commission was just some feedback on aligning certain areas, specifically around the riverfront, and to align that more with the Motco 2040 plan. So in order for us to really take a look at what it is that would satisfy the language for alignment, I think we just need a little bit more time to kind of bang it up against the 2040 plan and see what exactly, if there is a language difference, or if it really is built in there in a different way, and Montgomery County Planning Commission didn't actually pick that up. So it'll just give us two weeks to kind of work through a little bit of it.
So what do you need from us to?
Nothing.
The only thing that bothered us this evening was that you hold the public hearing. We've done so, and so council considers adoption a later date.
Correct. We can do that on the 20th.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, for all your work, and Stacy too, if she's here.
Yes. You'll see Stacy on the 20th.
Great.
And if you have, we'll be communicating in between then. If there are any questions, let me know. And it's been a pleasure working with you. I love this document. The process was wonderful, and I think there's some great things waiting to happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the 2018 Infrastructure Program update with Karen McNair from Gilmore &amp; Associates. Thank you, Karen.
I'm going to tee Karen up on this one. So before you is the next step in the entire infrastructure management plan that you've engaged Gilmore &amp; Associates to complete over the course of the fiscal year 2018. Karen was here last month to give you an update on different scenarios that were an option. Karen was here last month to give you an update on different scenarios that were an option. She's now going to present on the two implementation scenarios that you chose and asked her to do further information and research on. She also has more concrete figures. There are certain dollars that are not currently accounted for only because the televising of the storm sewer is not one hundred percent complete. But Karen will go into more detail on that. So Karen.
All right. Thank you very much. So tonight, I'm going to discuss the implementation scenarios. But the first thing I wanted to discuss, council had asked us to add in the gutter curb replacement and look at the curb work. So what we did is we used aerial mapping from Google Street View. And where we thought there were areas of gutter curb, we marked that in the pink colors here. So we added that in. That could be the concrete that you could see from East Ninth, or there could be brick, as you can see on Hollowell Street. So this is our best guess from what we could find without doing anything destructive to the roadways. But you can see that there's, there's a lot added in there. And this is about forty thousand linear feet of gutter curb that we suspect is out there. To remove that, put in new base, and then top the road again, we believe that would probably be around four point seven seven billion dollars to remove that gutter curb and put in curb, concrete curb to current standards. The next thing, this is a slide that we had used from our original presentation. It shows you, the blue is where your existing storm sewer is, and the orange is where we're proposing new storm sewer projects to go. But as we discussed, there is some storm sewer televising. It sounds like, there's good news. It sounds like they're going to get the entire borough done for the budget that was approved. So originally, we thought they could just get the east side done, but they were getting a lot more done every single day because the pipes are fairly clean. So they were able to televise a lot more and have very little downtime. So that's some very good news. But what they have found is that where you have metal pipe, water and metal don't mix very well, so it's corroding. You have, anywhere that you have the metal pipe, you're really finding significant corrosion. And so where they're televising and find that corrosion, we're recommending removing that whole line and replacing it with, with HDP, polyethylene pipe. That's a plastic pipe, which is current standards. But you also have some concrete pipe out there and some plastic pipe that has failed either through, or just broken pipe, or there's offset joints, or there's just a crack in the pipe. So these pink areas on the map show you where there's failures that they found during the televising. The grays, again, your existing storm sewer locations. They still have some work to do. They haven't been able to do Hector Street yet, so I don't know if there's any failures along there. But that's mostly concrete pipe, so I think that's probably going to be in better condition. And then there were some areas on the west side they hadn't completed yet either. So what we are finding, they're about two-thirds of the way done now. I think you're around nine hundred thousand dollars to replace the pipe that they did televise and that we found is failing. And then in those areas, some of those roads, we weren't doing as many repairs, too. So there's about an additional three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in roadway repairs that would be needed to do that storm sewer repair work as well. So just going back to the last presentation, before we get into the scope, I just wanted to remind you that we have different ways of dealing with each roadway. Some of them are maintenance. So the least work that you could do to a road would be crack sealing. So again, that's just sealing the cracks off. Microsurfacing would be a new surface. It's just a skim coat where you have maybe some minor cracking in the roadway, but more than we would do for crack sealing. Then we move over to rehabilitation, mill and overlay. You're taking off that top surface of the road and putting in a new surface. Some of these roads, we might also do some base repairs. So you have some cracking that we think is because the base is failing. There might be some movement in what's underneath the roadway. So we would repair that as well. The most that you would do to a road is full reconstruction. So again, we're starting all the way back down from your subbase, your dirt, and building the road all the way back up again. So here's our recommended scope. This is very similar to the last presentation, except we did update it a bit, as I said, to account for anything that we found during the storm sewer repairs that we would need to do. The scope is still mostly mill and overlay. Between the mill and overlay and the different base repair options, you're at sixty-three percent mill and overlay, which is good because that means you, you have a lot of solid roadways. And again, speaking to that last presentation, when we did the core sampling, you have very good subbase. So I think that's helping your roadways a lot. So this is our implementation schedule. These, these figures are very, very high. I can't get around that. But, you know, you've asked for a lot here. So this really incorporates a lot of things. It's, it's road repairs, it's storm sewer repairs, it's new storm sewer projects, it's curb installation, it's replacement of curb ramps, and it's, it's line striping. So it's really the roadway infrastructure. So there's a lot that goes into it, and none of it's, none of it's cheap.
Karen, can you go through that list one more time?
Sure.
So they can digest all of the items that are included in that figure.
Right. So it's roadway repairs, storm sewer repairs, storm sewer projects, so like new storm sewer, curb installation, removal of your gutter curb, and replacement of curb ramps and line striping. And these costs also include design, construction management, and construction. So I think this is, this is your full figure. It's, you know, it's not just construction. Then we come back later and say, well, now, you know, we're going to go out and design it. We need additional money. That, that's included in here. We did take it into account. We assumed about eight percent for design and contingencies, and then another eight percent for construction management. And that was on each block cost because you're not going to need as much design or construction management for crack sealing as you will when somebody's replacing the entire roadway. So we did try and take it into account on a block per block in a repair-type category.
So hypothetically, if there was some sort of in-house component that was mixed with consultant engineering, that cost would go down?
Yes.
Because it's built into that total number?
Correct.
Okay.
So the two scenarios you had asked for were accounting for efficiencies. We have that costing twenty-seven point one four million. Again, this is concentrating on grouping locations to reduce the number of mobilizations or times of moving the equipment during a single project. It considers major repairs. We're doing the storm sewer projects, so your normed, new storm sewer in years one and two, and then microsurfacing in year three. Now, that's a difference from the worst first, where we have microsurfacing in years four to five. And why we put it in year three, even though it's, it's not a major repair, it's just, it's, it's because if you do it earlier, then your road can last longer. If you wait too long to do it, you could end up with more cracking, and then it might become a mill and overlay. So by putting it in the middle of your five-year program, we think we can save that road and make it last even a little bit longer. By doing the worst first, you're then moving it towards the end because you want to get all your major road repairs and your mill and overlay done first. So I do think that is a benefit of the efficiencies and in addition to it costing a little bit less. We believe there will be additional cost for the worst first category because the way we have it laid out, and I'll show you the mapping for it, but we have four and a half times more mobilizations for the worst first because they're just going wherever the worst road is. So they could be on the east side, the west side, down by the river, up, you know, up the hill. So they really just move around a lot, and I think that's going to cost more. So the worst first, it concentrates on the worst conditions and the major repairs, and it doesn't consider location, like I was just saying. This spreads out the storm sewer projects a little bit more in years one to three because it, again, is, if the road's not as bad, then we would do that storm sewer project later, just when we would do that roadway repair. So this is the efficiency scenario. The bar graph shows you how many blocks in that specific year that we are showing in the map. The map is color-coded the same as the bar graphs are red would be year one. Orange is year two. Blue is year three. Yellow is year four, and the purple is year five. The way we have these projects split out, they can be done alone. So you could do, theoretically, do year one, and then you say, we've done the major roads. We don't want to do these other projects, and you could get those done. It's its own, their each year is their individual project, and they, they function alone. So this is how we get to the twenty-seven point one four million. Year one, we have fifty-three blocks, and that would be eight point eight six million. So you can see the red roads here, and then it's broken down these different categories. So we have fifteen, I'm sorry, thirteen for full reconstruction, one with major base repair, fifteen for moderate base repair, ten for minor base repair, and thirteen for mill and overlay. And then you can see those roads we've turned green since they're done. So for year two, it's the orange roads, which would be sixty-nine blocks. We think that would cost eight point eight million. We have four full reconstruction, three of major base repair, eighteen moderate base repair, fifteen minor base repair, and twenty-nine mill and overlay. This is year three of the efficiency scenario. It's the blue color. The seventy-eight blocks at four point zero six million. You can see that there's a decrease in this cost from years one and two, and that's because we're not doing any new storm sewers. So it's focusing on the roadway repairs. It's two for the major base repair, five for the moderate base repair, twelve minor base repair, twenty-five mill and overlay, nineteen for the microsurfacing, and fifteen for the crack seal. And you can see that there's no full reconstruction because we did that all in years one and two. This is year four. Again, there's no full reconstruction or major or moderate base repair, but there are eleven blocks with minor base repair, thirty-eight with mill and overlay, no microsurfacing, and thirty-three with crack sealing. So that's a total of eighty-two blocks. I believe that would cost three point two nine million. Those are the yellow roads. And this is year five, the last year of the efficiency scenario, which would include seventy blocks and believe would cost two point one three million. It's twelve for the minor base repair, thirty-two mill and overlay, and then most of this year is, is the mic, or the crack sealing. And at the end of that, those, all the roads would be completed.
That's your favorite slide, right?
It is my favorite slide, yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question? So we get through year five, and I guess internally, we're taking care of these roads as we're going through. But then, what's the recycling? You know, will we have to do this, start all over again? Like, just help me understand that a little bit.
Sure. So a roadway life is about twenty to twenty-five years. But that's, in this area, you get a lot more life out of roads as long as the base is good. You might have to mill and overlay. But if you keep up with the crack sealing and the maintenance, you usually get a longer life out of the roads as long as it's, there's no, you know, if you have water problems on a roadway and there's water sitting in the roadway, that road won't even last twenty years because it's going to crack and the water's going to get under it. So by maintaining the roads and continuing with the crack sealing as you go along, you really will increase the life of a road. Shady roads will also not last as long because the water will sit on there a little bit longer. The snow won't melt as quickly. So it's the same thing, water's getting into the roadway. But just the standard road life is about twenty, twenty-five years.
So it's, it sounds like what you're telling us, that while we are also considering the scenario to choose and fund in terms of infrastructure, we have to also be simultaneously looking at in-house operations that would allow us to maintain and upkeep the roads once the project has been completed.
Yes. And anytime you can do crack sealing on a roadway, that's going to just increase the life. And that's, I think, the easiest way to, even short-term maintenance for a roadway, something that council could consider for future. But, yeah, I mean, it, once, if you're doing all these base repairs, I think what you're finding in twenty, twenty-five years is more that you have mill and overlay, that you're not going to have as many base failures. By adding the storm sewer, then you're getting rid of those water problems. Again, you're not going to have that major cracking in these roadways, and they're going to last longer.
Would you consider what we currently do, crack sealing, the program? Or is that going to need to be an enhancement of what we currently do? So when we look at budgeting, there's a certain amount that our current staff does to fill potholes and things. But as we look to the future, will we need to make sure that there's enough money for a more robust program, I guess, is what I'm asking?
The answer is yes. We would need to look at beefing up what are we currently doing in-house. And that's both from, it's mostly from an equipment standpoint. I think we have talented individuals that can do the work in-house. It's just that they don't have the right tools, they can't do it.
So you wouldn't say that the program that we're doing today is the program that would keep our roads living for twenty-five years?
My understanding of the program you've been doing now is, is mill and overlay. So you need to do that in the long term. Crack sealing alone, I mean, it's a very good step to increasing the longevity of the road, but you do need to mill and overlay a road.
Okay.
I just think it's an additional piece that could be done.
Okay.
So the, the second scenario that you had asked to see was the worst first scenario. So this theory was to get all your, your worst roads done first. So in year one, we would be doing sixty-one blocks at ten point six seven million. Year two is thirty-five blocks, three point nine nine million. Year three is seventy-seven blocks, seven point one one million. Year four is eighty-one at three point eight seven million. Year five is ninety-eight blocks at two million. So the colors here are the same as the ones we used in the last scenario. So red is your year one, orange is year two, blue is year three, yellow is year four, and purple is year five. So I said earlier, the additional cost between this one, I really think, is the number of mobilizations that they would need is about four and a half times the efficiency scenario. So this is year one. You can see the red is spread out throughout the borough instead of grouped in one area. So you do have some down by the park. I believe that's Tenth Avenue, and then the rest is on the east side, really. But you can see how it's just, it's everywhere throughout the borough. So there's sixteen for reconstruction, seven major base repairs, sixteen moderate base repair, five minor base repair, sixteen mill and overlay, and no microsurfacing or crack sealing. This is year two, which is orange. You have no full reconstruction because those were all completed in year one. You have one mill and overlay with major base repair, fifteen mill and overlay with moderate base repair, thirteen mill and overlay with minor base repair, six mill and overlay, and no microsurfacing or crack seal. So again, that's thirty-five blocks, three point nine nine million. This is year three, which is the blue. Again, the full reconstruction and the major base repair are now complete. There would be seven blocks of mill and overlay with moderate base repair, thirty-two with minor base repair, thirty-eight of just mill and overlay, and no microsurfacing or crack sealing. So that would be seventy-seven blocks, seven point one one million. This is year four, which is the yellow color. All the full reconstruction, major and moderate base repair are complete. There would be ten blocks with minor base repair. I believe that's sixty-five mill and overlay, three microsurfacing, and three crack seals. So that would be eighty-one blocks, three point eight seven million. And this would be the last year of the worst first scenario. It'd be ninety-eight blocks at two million. So there was one mill and overlay, sixteen microsurfacing, and the rest would be crack sealing. And that's my favorite slide. Again, all the roads completed at the end of the five years for the, the worst-case scenario. Oh, I'm sorry, the worst first. That is my presentation. Do you have any questions?
And I see Harry Street is on both year ones, so that's a good thing for the borough.
Anyone in council have any questions?
So Karen, just a few clarifications. On each scenario, council does have the option, the, let me start over. The benefit of what you have provided to the borough and what will be in your next round of deliverables is that it's a comprehensive plan that illustrates the work that needs to be done from an infrastructure standpoint. You're giving them a five-year scenario that they can consider utilizing and rolling out. The other option that they have, based off the work that you've done, is if they need to, they can expand that timeframe. They can pick and choose specific roads or projects within this scenario, these different scenarios, in order to tackle immediately the future. I just want them to understand that what you're presenting to them is a five-year condensed two options. But what they'll get in their next round of deliverables is a report, which they can then use as a tool now and in the future, should they need to lengthen this, stretch this out, keeping in mind the fact that there's a phasing factor to this and that, you know, something that needs to get done first, needs to get done first before you move on.
Right. Right. And, and what goes along with the report is the, the Excel spreadsheet that And, and what goes along with the report is the, the Excel spreadsheet that we've been working on. And what I really see it as is a living document. So you can, if you want to change something, it's easy enough for us to go in and change that, and it updates everything else as we go along. You know, if, if this goes into ten years and we're finding that prices increased, well, we can easily update those pricing, and it updates the, the entire sheet. So, you know, along with the report, you are getting the document that we've been using to produce all these summers, and I think that's very valuable because that'll be something that the borough can either update or we can update, but it's something that will go along with this project for its lifespan.
So what are the actual next deliverables?
So the next deliverable would be the report, and that would include the spreadsheet, but the report would include everything that we used and the background information to give you these presentations. So it's everything that we used to start with and how we came up with these recommendations and all that written out, so you can really delve into that should you want to learn more.
I think what might be helpful for tonight is if you have an inclination regarding the worst first or the efficiency scenario. As Karen is then generating her final report, which will be the living document that you utilize moving forward in terms of infrastructure, do you have a preference off of what you've seen tonight, one over the other? Understanding the fact that the worst first comes with additional costs because of the whole mobilization factor.
Right.
My thought would be if it's going to take either five years or ten years, or however long we choose to do it, when we get that far, I would think, based on the costs, if we extend it from five to seven or five to eight years, it doesn't matter. But to keep the costs down, I would, I would go with the efficiency. It's still going to get most of the bad roads done in a, a, a good timeframe. Anyone else have any comments on that, or any opinions?
I think, I would be good. Go ahead.
I was thinking worst first.
Worst first.
You know, to me, two million, a two million dollar delta in year one is not a huge delta.
That's exactly my thought. I'm in agreement.
Anyone else? Okay, we're good?
I'd rather get rid of the worst.
Yeah, I'm good with the efficiencies. I think that ultimately, that could save us half a million dollars. So that's what I'm looking at.
I'd rather get the worst done first. Get it out of the way. It needs to be done.
One, two. I think we can chew on it a little bit.
I think we have to.
Right, I don't think we have to decide now. We probably should discuss this.
I think we do. We need to, we're going to need a little time on that.
Okay, but just keep in the back of your mind that as Karen is working towards this and we're getting this closer and closer, if you can give us additional direction, that would be fantastic.
Yep. And by then, we should be able to do that. Karen, thank you so much for all of your hard work. It's very much appreciated by all of us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need anything else from us for tonight?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Okay, thanks Karen. Karen was very diligent in meeting the timelines and due dates that we asked her to, so thank you for meeting those as well. I know that it wasn't easy. The goal here was so that as you move into July and you move into your budget cycle, that you have numbers in front of you that you know you're considering. Okay?
Now that we're past that shock, the next item on the agenda is the presentation of project estimates for Marywood Park House and the community center at the Fellowship House, with seller and jury. Good evening.
Great, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, especially on such an interesting and exciting night. A lot of cool things happening. I'm, I and Rich Powers are going to talk about the two projects we've been pursuing, first being the Marywood Park House, the second being the Fellows Community Center. And we are nearing the end of our process, which began early this year, which was to look at the two facilities individually towards their usability and improving their usability for the community, developing a set of priorities, almost like a menu that you can choose from as you, if you choose to implement changes in renovations as you go forward and, and, and different ways of grouping those. So I thought for Marywood, we would, I'd, I'd show you a slide we presented at the last time we met with you all, which were, again, under the idea of grouping tasks with costs, which I'll share with you tonight, in ways that you might implement them that makes sense. At the last time, I grouped it into three broad categories, which were exterior repairs, historic preservation, and then interior improvements. With, since we met last time, we had a pretty good idea of what the work would be in both buildings. We had a professional cost estimator, take our plans and our engineers' plans and cost them out to each line item. We have an Excel spreadsheet that it, it itemizes them, and then we've grouped them into a different way than this, which I'll share with you as we go along. Essentially, for Marywood Park House, total project for bricks and mortar plus design and soft costs, we're about two point six million dollars all in. And then there's several ways that can be broken out, and I'll show you in the last slide. I just wanted to review with you just briefly the, the process. We looked at the full exterior, roof, walls, windows, its conditions. This particular slide shows what I'm calling half timbering. You'll see that's a line item, which is the kind of Tudor look that's on the gable ends and used to be on other portions of the house that have since been stuccoed over. Developed the plan so we could do the detailed takeoffs. That's an example of the front elevations showing a porch, which we've talked about. The first floor plan, the functional arrangement that came out of the process, working with the steering committee, public meetings, and just thinking about how the building's being used and how it could be used better. Essentially, the blue area on the first floor is your large multipurpose room. If it were fitted out for a dining function, it'd be in the neighborhood of sixty to seventy people. There's two brown exhibit rooms, which are currently used that way. We're proposing an elevator in the upper-left corner above the blue, the blue multipurpose room, new handicap bathrooms, and a new warming kitchen in the back. That upper area where the warming kitchen and bathrooms are currently an apartment, as you probably know from the previous presentations, we're recommending that it not be a residential purpose anymore for several reasons, one of which is just building safety of having dissimilar uses is not a, a good practice. I'm showing you this slide just because the previous one showed the porch, so this is the characteristic of the porch, which is detailed as a restoration nineteenth-century style porch based on historic photographs that we were able to get from the borough. The second floor, its functionality is two exhibit rooms, which are the light brown areas on the left side. We've, there's an elevator that serves it, so it's fully accessible. The darker brown is the historic commission's working office, staff area, and the upper portion where the apartment is labeled D and C. That's a separate suite, which we're kind of, we're terming a bridal suite in parentheses. It could be used for any number of purposes, meeting rooms, but it's, we've, we've sort of separated it as its own little suite, and we costed what that would cost to create that as a unit. The third floor stays somewhat similar functions. The green area towards the bottom is the current Art League studio. Above that, where letter C is an area that's, it's historic society storage, not very efficiently used. That would become a workroom for the Art League cleanup space, that kind of stuff. And then across the hall, the brown area would be the historic society's storage, which currently is the apartment storage. Basement, most of the improvements down there are waterproofing it, cleaning it up, adding safe access, its own stairs down, storage for lock storage, which could be shared between the multipurpose functions and the historic, and utility upgrades, systems and the like. I need my glasses for this. So, so if, if you, the way we're proposing to group the, I'll look over here if you don't mind, just so I can read it easier. The way we're proposing to suggest you consider the costs are slightly different categories. And in the spreadsheet, which will be in the final document, which is the next deliverable, which is a couple of weeks away, I would say. It's, it really is itemized down to the door, you know, the, very detailed. So, and, and I've tried to group these so that as you compare the, the long Excel sheet, which is, I think, nine pages for the house, you can see where they come from. So we're proposing in broad categories, and then I can go into them in details a little bit, is just exterior work. What's it take to take the exterior of the structure and completely complete it? All the weatherproofing, all the appearance upgrades. This would be the site work, which is sidewalks, the stone wall, the steps going into the park that are a hazard, moving the monuments that are currently at the old Borough Hall, the access to the elevator, to ramps, that kind of stuff. Replacing, the, the project proposes to replace all the windows. We've characterized them into historic windows and, which would be custom-made windows to fit the frames that you have. And then what I'm calling nonhistoric windows, it still fit the windows, they're traditionally styled, they're just less expensive. We have line items for that. Restore the half-timber and stucco. The historic roofing scope is to, the, the full-in approach is to take the tiles that are on the main gable off, inspect the sheathing, repair it, ice and water shield, put them back, replace with ones to match, do the same on the gable. So it's all-new flashing, all-new, you know, that's a hundred-year roof, for sure. The upper portion, metal roof, historic metal roof, and then the flat portions in the back would be modern membrane roofing. So just to go through it, exterior, full-mani. Then the next one is really code compliance. There's a couple of categories to that. A big one is accessibility. So this, I have the elevator as its own line item, so not counting the elevator, which as you can see is a little more than two hundred thousand dollars. So two hundred seventeen thousand dollars provides, yes?
I'm sorry, so is the elevator, I'm assuming it's an ADA requirement?
Yeah, yeah, so, so primary function areas in, the, the ADA code is a civil code, national code, maybe thirty-five years now. It requires all buildings to be accessible, and then it has footnotes to go with that. So historic buildings have a little more leeway, existing buildings that have structural limitations have leeway. But as time goes on, the grace period for why is this building not compliant becomes less and less a valid argument. So this building that we're in today has to be a hundred percent on day one. Historic buildings, the law was written so that it, it's, people can phase it in as it becomes available. So when you do major renovations, the, the codes have thresholds of degrees of accessibility need to provide, but the bottom line is, primary functions, which in the case of this building is all three floors because there's, there's art, there's historic commission, there's exhibits, there's public meeting rooms, it's really all floors. So I think the short answer is ADA code requires all three floors to be accessible, including from the ground up the five feet or four feet to get into the first floor.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, but then the building code could, could let you postpone that elevator if you spend twenty percent of your project cost in any given year towards accessibility. And the interesting thing about accessibility is that could include bathrooms, accessible knobs on doors, other modifications that you do. So there's two codes at play here. So the code compliance, really, it's all the accessible items besides the elevator. So it's accessible bathrooms, it's things like hardware, handrails, that kind of stuff. That plus the elevator really kind of covers the accessibility aspects of code compliance. The rest of them are what I'd call life safety. These uses with these stories and the construction type, this building should be sprinkled. So the sprinkling cost, just as an example, is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The accessible toilet rooms is seventy-one thousand dollars. You know, fire alarm, that kind of emergency lights, exit signs, that's thirty-three thousand. We're improving the fire escape. Fire escapes are allowed in buildings, and, but, so we're doing things to make it more safe, adding a door instead of having people crawl through a window, making sure it's safe and sound. And then the basement really is an occupied space. It's not necessarily a primary function, but people will be down there giving it a second exit. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar item. So your elevator is kind of, and the costing of that, when you compare it to the spreadsheet, it's the power to it, cutting the holes through the floor, building the shafts, buying the cab, you know, all the parts that go into that. So I've tried to group these numbers so that you can tie them back to the spreadsheet. HVAC electric service and utilities, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. I don't see this project being implemented that way, where you might say, let's in two thousand nineteen do all the HVAC and electric. It's really, they're, they're tied into how you're doing an area. Like, if you're doing bathrooms or you're doing something, you do the electric and HVAC in that area. So, but it is grouped that way, and then you can sub-separate them out if, if you go through the detail work. And then the other work, which is kind of not these broad categories per floor, and then a little bit of a list of what's in that. So on the first floor, I have a category called nonhistoric upgrades, which is plaster repair, lighting, all kinds of things, like in bathrooms and secondary areas. But then historic finishes and floors, just that as an example. You know, if you go into the exhibit rooms, dimensions hall, the stairs where the, the trim has been painted, the doors have been changed, you know, maple floor's been put down over the old O flooring, that's a ninety-one thousand dollar item. To bring that back to the rooms, as Marywood lived in them, which is pretty interesting that you have that much existing fabric. And, and the back, we have a line item for the kitchen fit-out. Second floor, I separated it into two categories, what I call the bridal suite, and then the rest of it, which is the historic commission offices and the, and the exhibit rooms up there. And then the third floor, which is, you know, the improvements to the art galleries. Now, an item there called rounding adjustment, that's, I'm not an accountant, as you can tell, I wouldn't have a number called rounding adjustment. I put that there because I want you to be able to draw parallels between line items in the Excel spreadsheet and how I reach these categories. And to, there's lots of minutia in there, and I didn't do the estimate from the estimator. So I, I could have taken that and just sort of randomly divided it equally between all the categories, because I, at the end of the day, I wanted that number to be the same dollar as, so this arguably could be divided in all of them, but I just didn't do it that way as my own methodology, just. And then usually in a construction project, we assume ten percent for architecture, engineering, and soft cost legal, what permits, what have you. So two point six is a full boat, and it could be less if you don't go all the way. And that's, boy, the summary for Marywood. We could take questions on Marywood now, or we could move into the community center if, if you have.
Do any questions on Marywood now?
Do any questions on Mary Wood now?
Okay.
If you have, if council has any.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Doug handled Mary Wood House, and I have been handling the community center project. So I'm happy to show you that again with costing this time. So, much of the same slides from the last presentation are the same. We added cost to them. So, there's no new design effort, but there is, there's numbers involved. I want to remind you how I, how I broke up the, I'll show you the floor plan first. So, floor plan of the community center, existing envelope, existing walls. Each of the separate colors and labeling's is a category which we took as a standalone, and that's what we put prices to, to add up to a full project. So, they may be sections and categories that you can take and do as one, or they can build up and, and phase into a larger project. But this is how we separate it for the benefit of breaking down a bigger number, and, and so you can see where that is. So, to remind you what those were. Program wing, this is where the existing fitness room is. We're renovating that substantially to provide three standalone program rooms, which could be cordoned off into one big room. So, that's the program wing. Since we're putting the program wing where the fitness center is, we're going to move the fitness center into the large activity area, which is kind of underutilized presently. With that goes HVAC, it's a full fit-out, it's a building of a room, moving equipment across. The renovation of the locker rooms, this would be a kind of a, almost to a gut job. Totally redoing the shower areas, giving a proper changing area, redoing lockers, fixtures, things like that. Cleaning up the locker rooms to make them more usable. The lobby area, really presenting kunchehocken in the lobby. This would include the kitchen that's there, converting it to more of a pantry-type thing without having cooking in there. Renovating the admin minorly. The multipurpose room, staying wholly functioning how it is, upgrading with padding, upgrading with a divider to, to separate the room into two for, for certain events. Getting rid of the windsock ductwork, which seems to be frightening. Moving into the gymnasium, minor work in here, again, revamping the HVAC system. So now it'll be split system, heating and cooling. Again, that would get rid of the sock ductwork. And really just cleaning up the ceiling, not much work in there. And then again, the exterior, replacing all the roof, well, replacing the roofing minus the EPDM, which was on the addition. That seemed to be sound. EPDM roof gets you 25 years-ish. It's 15 years old. So there's, that seemed to be sound. The gymnasium roof, the balance of the pitched roofs, which are shingled, need to be reshingled, as you'll see in some photos in our report. They need to be repaired.
Rich, just to confirm, when you're talking about the locker rooms and revamping them, you're talking from an aesthetic standpoint?
We're talking from an aesthetic standpoint. We're also talking about a functional standpoint. We will rebuild the shower areas to make them a little more generous. That'll, and when I get into the locker section, I'll have a page on lockers, and we can talk about that in a little more detail.
Accessibility, are they, are they limited accessibility-wise currently?
They're currently not fully accessible. By, by doing what we're proposing, it brings them full circle to, to 100% accessible. So without further ado, the costs here. So as you see, I, I put a cost to each of the categories. So, dot, 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 bottom line, construction cost is about 2.7 for this full monty, which we've studied here. And I'll go through each of those sections to tell you what's in each of them. I'll come back to the slide at the end. I think that might be helpful. But I'll go through each of these sections to show you what's in each of these numbers. The program wing, again, I'll just stand at the screen here. Right now, this is currently the, the fitness center. So what we're doing is blowing major holes in structure to create one big room, which can be cordoned off by cordoned doors. That'll give the, that'll give the opportunity to have three programs at once. Flexibility to have small rooms, medium rooms, and a large room. With that, what we did was take out the stairs, but we preserved the, we preserved the access to the attic by building kind of a ship's ladder stair from the utility room. So we still have the storage of the attic. We shoehorned a bathroom in there, which will help with the program possibly, if that's childcare still in, in the program C room there. One thing that we also did in the program room was took the underutilized administration conference room and gave that a programming, gave that the ability to be programmed from the other side. So it could be used for various items. What we're calling it is a, is a media nook. Could be a pla, a small type hangout place. It could be a separate meeting room. But it has the flexibility of being utilized. So all in for this category of, of the plan were about $463,000. And in that cost includes the replacement of the HVAC system that goes along with it. So, conveniently, the way this thing breaks up, there's an HVAC system for each of the, each of the categories. I'll backtrack at the end and show you what replacing just the HVAC for the entire building would cost. So this was the program wing category.
So I'm sorry, when you're talking about the HVAC, this is exclusive of the gymnasium, right?
When I get to the gymnasium category, the gymnasium would be to replace the HVAC unit for the gymnasium, along with reworking that ductwork. So yes, that would be onto itself for the gymnasium category. But then, like I said, at the end, I'll show you the, the cost for just, if we were to do nothing else but replace HVAC for this building in first blush, that, that has a cost too.
And then when you were referencing storage, where, where were you referring to?
Currently, the attic above the fitness area, there's old trophies and things down there, but also in this area, it's quite a bit of storage. Right now, there's two stairs up to it. We're preserving that. So what we're doing is building a new stair going around our new program room, so we can still access the attic.
Okay. So what has to be done up there?
Up there? Nothing needs to be done, other than we're building a new stair to it.
That's it?
Yeah. It's attic, it's storage, it's not a habitable space. So in terms of accessibility, if that's what you're asking, it, it doesn't apply. It's not a habitable space.
And we need another elevator there, if we did it. Yeah.
The fitness center category, which again encompasses the activity center, kind of the, the large space in the middle of the building with ping-pong tables and pool tables now. We're building basically a new fitness room in the middle of that. Making the most use of that, preserving the overlook to the gymnasium, preserving the group fitness room that's currently a tenant. So the discussion could be made further down the line if that stays a tenant, or if it's, if it's borough programs. So this would include, again, replacing of the HVAC unit that is associated with this area. Build out of the fitness center. Refresh of all the common areas that are around it. And that cost is somewhere around $407,000. To the locker room category, the locker room has a small footprint, but there's, there's a lot of work involved in, in locker rooms. So, what we're proposing to do currently, right here, is a janitor's closet. We're proposing, proposing to remove that janitor's closet and put it in one of the storage areas that's off the activity area currently. So we're rebuilding this entire shower block. And what that enables us to do is get properly accessible shower units that aren't currently. And what it also enables us to do is get changing areas that are adjacent to the showers to create a little bit more privacy and a little bit more of an appropriate locker room for the type of building that we want to move towards here. So again, replacing of the HVAC units, replacing of the lockers, redo of the showers, replacing all the fixtures and aesthetically revamping the entire locker room area. That's looking at $328,000. The lobby, this is really improving the security of the building. So along with this would be the access control, which we can link back to the system that's here. What we're proposing to do is making those doors to the multipurpose room exit only. They seem to be a nice source of just wandering in and using the bathroom, so we'd like to limit that. Create a door entry point to the entire facility. So when somebody enters the building, they can only get into the lobby. They can check in at the front desk, which we'll rebuild. And it kind of creates a secure facility, as opposed to now you really can, can do what you want in there. So again, new HVAC, new finishes, access control system. Kind of bring the lobby to the kunchehocken brand a little bit, so that'll, that'll be involved with the finishes. So that's a little bit on the high side, but it's $422,000 as the cost estimate came back. And that's kind of a visual of what that might look like. The multipurpose room, not, not a ton of work that we're doing in here, installing pads surrounding the room, adding a divider curtain, which will enable two different events at one time. Poking into the garage, which will enable storage in that garage from the inside. Replacing of the, of the sock-type ductwork, and again, replacing HVAC.
Soft floor.
Replacing of the sports floor. That's almost $4,000, uh, $400,000, $397.
The floor has to be replaced?
The sheet flooring that's down now, the seams are splitting. It's kind of at the end of its life.
Say again?
It's hard. The cushioning gets, gets a little tough after years. It's, it's due to be replaced with a similar-type cushioned sports flooring.
I have a question about the wall padding. Would that help with the acoustics in that room?
Any soft surface that you put in that room will, will help with the acoustics.
Because they're difficult at times.
Yes.
Right. We get complaints about bingo sometimes, that it's difficult to hear.
Well, the interesting thing about what we're doing to the facility is, there could be a discussion of where bingo happens now.
Right.
We're creating a program room, which may be more appropriate for bingo. So, the acoustics in the, in the multipurpose may be better suited for athletic-type events, and a program room might be better suited for bingo. But to answer your question, anything soft in there will help. So that's the multipurpose room. The gymnasium, there's not a ton of scope in here, other than to secure the deteriorating exterior openings. Some of the doors don't function very pro, very properly. Clean up the ceiling. I think the, the main pecking order here was to replace the HVAC with the split systems to, to provide heating and cooling into that room. Our engineers ran calc's, and the existing sock, maybe this is good news, maybe this is bad news, can't support the split system, so that would have to be replaced with rigid. And that, all-in costs for the gymnasium category of the work would be $268,000. The exterior of the building needs, needs, needs some help. You can see in some of these photos here, some of the previous woodwork painted needs to, you know, we all need to be prepped and painted again. Everything that was previously painted needs to be painted. So what we're proposing here is revamping the envelope by recoding the stucco, re-roofing the shingled areas, which are, you know, in the, we had a drone fly over to get some of these things. We're replacing the gymnasium roof. That's what this sheet, sheet roof is now. So we have, this is the, the old existing building where we're putting the program. This is where the attic happens that we talked about. So that shingle that needs to be replaced, this is the roof to the multipurpose room. Shingle, again, needs to be replaced. And when I say replaced, replaced in kind with another shingled roof. The EPDM membrane that's here, that's existing, that was part of the 2000, you know, project renovation to this, is sound. So we're proposing to leave that while replacing the rest of the siding. Or, excuse me, the roofing. So to do all that, all that work on the exterior, replace gutters, downspouts, along with all that, reseal all the windows and doors. I didn't talk about the new proposed side entry, but concrete walk up to that is $421,000. So those are the seven categories that we talked about. So I'm going to flip back to, to the costing page, just to sum that up. So again, the construction cost for that adds up to 2.7. 10% if we get to the grand total is right around $3 million. If we were to pull out all the HVAC work from that and just do that tomorrow, that's something like $426,000. That might be beneficial to you. So that's kind of what, what we've been doing.
So when you say pull out the HVAC, so in each seven categories, you talked about specifically HVAC?
In each of the seven categories includes replacing the HVAC unit and redistributing the units per that category.
So if HVAC was a priority, you pull out the cost per each seventh section to get a total of $426,890? And that takes care of the HVAC for the entire building in one shot?
That takes care of replacing the units, correct.
Okay.
But not the sock?
Yeah, it'd be the whole bit.
It would be the whole thing? It would be the vents also?
It would include replacing the units. I included replacing the sock, because I know that was a priority in that number.
Right. Okay.
It wouldn't be replacing the diffusers as part of that initial work.
Just to confirm, so if, if in looking and evaluating in the plant, in the very nice plan that you've both put together, thank you very much for both properties.
Love it. Thank you very much.
The, hypothetically, if they wanted to look at HVAC and lobby, they have the numbers that they need in order to make that decision?
Yes. Our next deliverable to you all is, is a report, which will include, as Doug was saying, detailed cost reports, Excel spreadsheets that add up to these numbers in these categories. So, that can almost act as a menu, that you could, you could see how we add it up to that.
Are there any costs that they're not seeing, or that they will not see in your next deliverable, as they're making decisions?
No.
For both properties?
For the community center, I could say that the all-in cost for everything probably is that $3 million.
Yeah, these numbers were to complete the entire project, you know, to a class A level.
Okay. So what is your next deliverable?
Our next deliverable is reports for each of the projects that we've been compiling. That kind of documents the process from when we started. Research meetings, steering committee meetings, presentations to you all. Our designs for each, costings for each, our assessment of the existing conditions of the building, kind of compiled into one document.
And, and a narrative that sets who participated and the sort of the philosophy behind how it's organized. Sort of, so it can be a roadmap for you to go forward.
Great. Is there any questions?
Why do you feel that we need security doors in our law?
I think in, in, in these times, I don't think you can have a building where you're trying to attract young people to, that you can have a facility that if someone's back's turned at, at the front desk, and somebody can just walk into.
Rich, can I jump in from a user perspective, since we are utilitizing Lauren? If you want to jump in at all, feel, please feel free. When you're looking at an ac, the actual access in and out of that facility, we have a lot of issues in terms of catching people before they just enter the facility. There is, we have children in that facility, so there's a concern just in terms of how people coming in and out flow. So we're not talking so much in terms of security doors, stay out. We're talking about funneling traffic through a professional, appropriate manner, where you're actually serving as a gatekeeper to access in and out of the facility. To, not only for safety of the participants, kids, members that are taking, that's currently taking place in the building, but also staff in terms of managing the in-and-out flow of individuals. So you're, you're shifting the perception in terms of how you enter the building. There is a natural flow right now, when you enter the building, to just come in and just go. go wherever you want to go. That's a safety concern. It's a liability concern. It's been flagged numerous times when you talk to Divot, in terms of how we're coming in and out. If you evaluate other community centers, there is an access point, which we're lacking right now. So we're doing an evaluation of the entire facility, so, under Doug and Rich's guidance as well, because it was brought up in their evaluation, just in terms of seeing how everything is used, we put it in there. I think it would be an improvement to the facility in terms of usage.
Well, I just kept seeing the Plymouth Community Center, and then you could just walk in there and go up to their counter and go up through their hall and whatever.
Right, but the point is, you can walk into their facility and go to their front counter. And then you are directed to other rooms.
You can go by our front counter. You can walk directly by it. That is the problem. And people do it all day long. It is, it's a problem.
Where's Lauren?
She's back there. Anything?
Would you like, would you-
I agree with what Steph said. I think she summed it up best. We did have an incident since the few months that I have been here, where there was someone there, and it was a concern. So I agree with what Steph said, and I agree with what's proposed as well.
And what does it look like, what you're proposing?
It's a shift to the door. It's a shift to, yeah.
That's all.
So currently, there was an old kind of roll-down door opening that's kind of in this area. So that's, what we're basically doing is just putting doors in that opening.
Right.
So that'll halt any traffic before they check in. And making these doors, which currently go to the multipurpose room, exit only. So we'll get rid of any access that someone wandering in and wants to go use that restroom. We can limit that.
Okay, so to get into the multipurpose, you actually go through-
The multipurpose room.
You actually go into the facility now.
Yeah. So you go in there and-
You're at the checkpoint at the front gate.
Walk in. What we're doing is taking out the coat closet that was there, and making an access point into the multipurpose room that way.
Idea being that the lobby in this community center is meant for the public. It's meant to be used by the public, to be utilized by the residents. The lobby is the open space, you would say.
Right.
Past the front desk is where you want to start monitoring reservations, rentals, program participants, memberships.
Daycare.
Right. So it's just check-in, check-out. It's a flow. It's a flow issue.
If I could just add one thing, it's really, I think the perception that people come into won't change much at all. It's, the word "security" is kind of a scary term for it. It's really guiding people past the corner of the desk, and it's eliminating the easiness to be able to just make a quick left and disappear into the multipurpose room. So I think, we understand the perception. You don't want to have a turned-off security, you know, appearance.
Yeah, I just kept thinking of the Plymouth site, thinking, they don't have that.
Their building's 15 years old now, too, Anita.
Yeah, it is.
But maybe they need to revisit it.
I just needed to-
I think you'll have that same degree of welcomeness. You'll come in, the counter's there, you'll see the people. It's just, everybody has to go right past the corner of the desk, where Steph is, and that's very important. And then, once you're in there, you can wander around freely, once you're past. It should be similar welcomeness that you have now.
Lieutenant Metz, do you have any input for that?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
I could talk all night about this.
That's why I asked.
We're trying to limit the calls to you.
Lack of security is what scares me. And this is an opportunity, right now, in our country. We all see the news. It's awful what's going on. And these security issues have never been addressed. We talked about life safety earlier. Look at the tremendous effort they put into fire evacuation, and alternative routes, and all those things, for a fire that happened in the 20s that killed a bunch of students. There are people being murdered daily in this country by maniacs, and we all know that, and security has never been addressed. And right now, finally, they're starting to look at this in a different way, and they're starting to take an opportunity from the ground floor to address some of these things. And within the month, we completed police department, we've been in the police department, completed active shooter training for the borough, including the fellow spouse, community center staff. And one of the things that they talked about was this, the people that work there, they don't feel secure. You know, especially after we scared them to death with all these scenarios, which are real, because that's what we want to do. We want to get them thinking about this.
That's true. Scary.
I'm pretty sure Lauren took out an employee, right? Yeah.
Everybody wants to scare me. But, Abby, you know, this is really a time for us to start looking at security like we do other aspects of life safety, because people, it's really a big issue, because that's what people are getting harder for.
Thank you, Lieutenant Metz. So I guess the takeaway from this, Doug, Rich, is, we know we have one more deliverable from you in terms of narrative report for council. You have numbers in front of you, as requested. They're going to be part of budgetary discussions for the next few years. This gives you a plan to work off of. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Next item on the agenda is to consider 152 West Fourth Avenue, the zoning hearing board application. Ms. Stettler, if you can just kick us off, please.
The property of 152 West Fourth Avenue is in the Borough Residential One Zoning District. It is a longtime non-conforming mixed-use. It had a commercial amusement machine business on the first floor for many, many years. In 2015, the zoning board approved a change of non-conforming use for that particular commercial area, changing it to a residential area. The board placed a condition on their approval that the new first-floor residential unit be only leased to a member of the owner's family. Well, times have progressed, and the family has outgrown the space that is on the first floor, and now desires to sell the building. They believe that it is going to be a detriment to selling the building to require that the owner or a member of his family occupy the first-floor unit. So they will be going to the zoning hearing board to ask to have that condition on the previous approval removed. Mr. DePietro is here, who represents the owner of the building, and he can answer any questions you might have. This is scheduled for a zoning board hearing on the 18th of June.
Good evening, members of council. I'm happy to say I'm not asking for any money, and this issue doesn't involve any money, so.
When I'm listening.
Chris Stettler certainly described what we're looking for. My clients purchased the building in 2015. The first-floor unit was, for a long-time, commercial property. Had about 12 employees from time to time. That changed. They gave their approval to change that from commercial to residential to fit in with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is basically residential. And they said that it was consistent with the use in that area. What they did, unfortunately, at the time, was to say that the people who owned the building should, can only use that first-floor apartment. In other words, that first-floor apartment, which was residential, should only be occupied by the owners of the building. With all due respect to the zoning board, it didn't matter at the time, because this was a young couple, and they had no children. Well, since then, they've had some children, and they may have more, and so they need to move, because the space is very, very limited. We're asking the zoning board to remove that condition. Nothing else. No other changes, no additions, no, nothing else. Just to allow anyone who comes in or either buys that building to rent out that first space as an apartment.
Right now, it's, so now it's just, it's two, the first floor-
Yes.
And then the original apartment on the second.
Yeah, and that's always been, and nothing, nothing's required with that. It's just that that first floor went from commercial to residential, and they attached and said, "You people who own it, somebody from your family has to live there." We didn't argue, because at that point, we didn't need to have larger quarters. Now that there is a child and another one on the way, and they may want to sell, they're not sure, but they're looking for space, and you can't sell with that restriction, because if you're limited to the shoe family, nobody's going to buy, because they're not members of that family. So, you know, the requirement should be eliminated. And that's it. That's all we're asking for.
So John-
And we'll be there on June 18th. We would appreciate your concern and acquiescence in that, if you'd make that known. Yes.
That arrangement, asking that it be a member of the family-
Yes.
Seems unique. Why was that, it's not?
No, I said it happens a lot, but as John knows, it usually happens, because it's not an issue for the applicant, and then they have to deal with it down the road, exactly.
Yeah, and I think-
So what was the rationale? Why did they?
Well, you never, who knows what the zoning hearing board was thinking, but generally speaking, it limits the use to a very specific individual, and to what's presented to the zoning hearing boards. So if they're concerned about allowing a duplex in the future, what they do is they condition it on a used or failing member. It actually happens quite often.
Yeah. And Ms. Tino, we would, at the time, we had some qualms. We thought this was a restriction that might even be considered discriminatory, unconstitutional. We didn't want to get into challenges at that point, because it didn't make sense. It wasn't an issue three years ago. Now that the family's expanded and has to move, it's an issue. So that's how all this came about. So we'd appreciate your support. I apologize.
Chris, do you have something to say?
My client is out of town tonight, but he will appear at the zoning hearing board.
Did Chris have something to add? Do you remember anything from it? What the intent was?
I remember that there was concern about who was going to occupy both of the units, and that this was a way of, you know, maybe having a little more control over the second unit, over the existing unit, because there weren't really, I think there are a number of apartments in that area-
There are.
...which created concern that there would be another apartment, and in this way, you had an owner-occupied building.
Okay.
The other thing that's important is that in the last two and a half years, there's never been an incident. In fact, we took a commercial spot that was in front of the building and made it residential parking. So parking's not an issue. We did receive a variance at that point. There is a driveway along there for two or three cars, so we're just asking that the condition they put in in 2015 be lifted. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we need a motion for that?
If that's something council, you can make a motion to remain neutral and let the zoning hearing board make a decision. You can, if you support the application, make a recommendation that my office submit a letter to that effect. Or you, of course, can oppose the application and authorize my office to appear in opposition.
I'll make a motion to submit the letter.
To support.
To support.
And I'll need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
John, you'll receive a copy of that letter when I send it to Mike Clark.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
John?
John, one minute, please. John?
I recall that there was something more to this. I don't recall specifically, but my position would be to be neutral.
Okay, so you need to redo the motion, and you need to note for the record that-
Okay.
Ms. Tino.
I'll make a motion to submit a letter-
For support?
For approval.
Are we talking about the same property? 15, it's at the corner of Fourth and Maple.
So, there was, at this point-
Right.
And is this the family that owns Winwa?
They used to. They sold Winwa. Yes.
Because, and unfortunately, right now, I don't have all the memory on it, but they were actually visiting different, there were concerns in the neighborhood, and they were actually going and talking to individuals. Chris, do you have any recall?
To individuals, no.
Because the neighborhood was very concerned, gosh, I can't remember.
I do remember the neighborhood being concerned. I know that it is also not uncommon, when something like this is going to change, for the applicant to speak to the neighbors, so the neighbors have a good understanding of what is going on, what they propose to do, and then they can make their decision whether they want to come out and-
So there's an apartment building directly across the street, I believe, from that?
Yes.
On the corner?
Yes.
It's three apartments?
Yes.
Are there any restrictions on that one?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there any on the house next door?
No.
That is also two apartments?
No, there isn't. And if you go further up west on Fourth Avenue, there's about an eight or 10 apartment complexes. No restrictions.
That's what I thought.
And, you know, the only issue, Ms. Tino, that I recall was that people were concerned about parking, and they didn't know what was going to go there. I always tell my clients, when they file a zoning application, "Talk to your neighbors. Tell them what you want to do," because people are afraid of things they don't understand. They did come to the hearing. No one took an appeal. The board found that it was appropriate. They gave a waiver for any additional off-street parking, and they haven't had an incident since. There's been no complaints to the police or to the-
The logic would, I would be in agreement.
Yeah.
It's just because of trying to understand what had happened. And again, my recall isn't very good on this, but I thought that there was something more to it. And with that in mind, I just didn't want to send this on supporting it, but they'll, of course, have all the detail of what more is-
Yeah, and people are certainly able to come-
I mean, clearly, there's enough to make this happen.
Yeah, I would, and very honestly, it's really not an issue, with all due respect, and I would appreciate council support, because it would be in keeping with the neighborhood, and there hasn't been. I mean, obviously, if there were issues with the police or something like that, the restriction is very, very restricted.
If it's all very standard, and there isn't something more to it, I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
It makes all the sense in the world. I just thought, for some reason, that there was something more, and I don't know, but-
I think, just for the record, we need to make note of the fact that we probably should just do a roll call, and leave it at that.
So we're going to go with the motion from Ms. Barton, and the second, and a roll call vote. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll read to it, so you have to go through it. I will read.
Let's go through it. Okay. I'll start on the other end. Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sakalaski?
Yes.
President Leonard?
Yes.
Vice President Flanagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tino?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Metz.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
Wasn't the machine thing?
No. No, I mean-
Next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing the tuition reimbursement for Officer Eric Hall. Again, this is a contract item. The funds are budgeted for. Officer Hall has turned in what is required for the request. The class is at Penn State. We need the authorization and a motion from council, if you're so inclined.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approving recommended revisions to the historic conservation overlay ordinance. I'm going to turn this over to Mike Peters to kick this off. I just want to preference this discussion with, tonight, we are discussing staff and legal recommended revisions to this ordinance that was passed a year ago. We've now had an opportunity for it to be in action and see how it works for a year. We've also, and Mike will go over this, in terms of adopting a comprehensive plan, and we've also initiated a process where we are evaluating ordinances on the whole. So the emphasis on this is administration, council, and legal, looking at this from a user perspective, and how it fits into everything that's going on with what we're doing right now. And we are recommending specific revisions that we'd like you to consider, that will be on your June 20th agenda for further action, if you're so inclined. Okay?
Thanks, Steph. So with that, as council knows, you gave my office and administration authority to So with that, as council knows, you gave my office and administration authority to begin looking through basically all of the ordinances of the borough, but we have been focusing currently on the, as you know, we did the parking ordinance. That was the first one we tackled. We are now focusing on the zoning ordinance, and the overlay that we're talking about is a nice place to start because it is a standalone and separate ordinance. So we can analyze it separately from the remainder of the zoning ordinance and determine whether or not there are any improvements to be made. We had the benefit of getting a sneak peek at your comprehensive plan. We knew that one of the things that was set forth in the comprehensive plan was an emphasis on encouraging single-family homes. And we know that council shares that intention very much so, so much so that last year, you adopted an ordinance that protects the historic single-family homes, and those are homes built in 1967 or before within the borough. With that in mind, and seeing the notation in comprehensive plan, we decided to take a step back and speak with the individuals that are actually, are actually trying to manage this ordinance. And those are, generally speaking, administration and the developers within the town. As part of that conversation with them, it was our intention to determine whether or not the ordinance is currently working to encourage single-family homes within the borough. And we got some very interesting feedback with respect to how it's been working in practice. And so the proposed amendments are with respect to basically three separate categories. One, and these categories are consistent with the overlay. One, properties that need to be demolished. Two, properties where there is a proposal to convert a single-family home into a different use, like a commercial use, an office use, or a twin-dwelling use, multifamily use. And then three, properties for which alterations and renovations are proposed to an existing single-family home to continue its use as a single-family home, just bigger. And those three categories in mind, we began speaking with developers to see, are we encouraging new individuals to come into the borough and purchase single-family homes? And what we were told was that the, so right now, they're all permitted by conditional use, so you're not prohibiting any of these things. But the interesting thing that we found was, you can imagine a young family that wants to move into the borough finds an incredible house somewhere within the borough that they want to expand so it fits their needs. Right now, under your ordinance, in order to purchase that home, add the addition, and move into the borough, it requires a conditional use. And the reason that you did it by conditional use instead of a zoning variance is because you wanted to encourage that use. You wouldn't do a conditional use or a special exception unless it was permitted by right. And so rather than treating it as something that's not permitted, as other municipalities do, they prohibit the changing of single-family homes, you went forth and allowed it as a conditional use. Well, that conditional use carries with it a process and a cost and legal fees and engineering fees that these families are running into. So the first thing that was suggested to us by the individuals that are actually enforcing the ordinance is, in practice, and this is also what administration has found, due to the price point of homes within this borough, also the alterations and renovations that are occurring are doing nothing but improving the houses within this borough. So our first proposal is to try to streamline the process for alterations and renovations and to just allow it by right to single-family homes. It'll still be required to go through the other processes. The addition and alteration would need to comply with the underlying height requirements, the dimensional requirements, the building code requirements. It would simply be that that extra step that exists right now, that may not exist in another municipality that is competing for these new families and new individuals, is the conditional use step. So our first proposal is to remove the conditional use requirement for alterations and additions to single-family homes if they're going to continue their use as a single-family home. The second proposal that we have- Oh, sure. Please.
Are there any questions on that first item? Expansions and alterations? Okay.
Wonderful. Good start so far. The next item that we began looking at is, we have found, in terms of how the ordinance is working, that with respect to demolitions, there are really two different types of demolitions. So there's a demolition because a structure is unsafe, and there's a demolition because the structure no longer functions financially as a single-family home for continued use. The first category, if a structure is structurally unsafe and is present in this borough, if you're trying to encourage individuals to purchase properties and to better the borough, those structurally unsafe buildings, if your administration determines that they're structurally unsafe, they need to come down. And so the proposal would be to separate out demolitions for buildings that are structurally unsafe, and your administration would handle that administratively, and demolition of single-family homes that are not structurally unsafe, but that the applicant is arguing that they're no longer financially viable. And that is something that municipalities and borough councils often consider. It's something that can be proven by objective evidence. And so the applicant, should they wish to argue that a historic structure needs to come down because it's no longer financially viable, they would come in for a conditional use before you, because that is the type of thing where if you're trying to strike the balance between encouraging safe structures in the borough and maintaining your single-family homes, that's where you strike that balance. So it's still permitted as a permitted use, it's just permitted by conditional use. So you're not discouraging it, you're just setting forth a procedure that applicants need to proceed through. So with respect to demolition, are there any questions with respect to that?
I think the only point of clarification is to add the fact that the zoning officer has also reviewed the proposed amendment. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
And I think she's voicing exactly what Mike is saying, is that, yes, if it's administrative, her main concern is putting in an administrative process that is consistent, that can then be filed, that goes along with the property. So we have documentation. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And then finally, last but not least, the purpose of the HRC ordinance when it was passed was really to preserve the historic single-family homes in the borough. And part of the issue with that is the conversion of single-family homes into other uses. I mean, that really is probably the heart and soul of what the historic conservation district was attempting to not prevent. Again, we're not preventing it, but to require that to come through as a conditional use to borough council. So those conversions, while we may tweak the requirements and make them, well, I'll tell you that we will, because you can always better everything, right? We'll modify the requirements, but it stays a conditional use. So there's actually no real change aside from trying to make it more objectively manageable. And then, so that council is aware, as part of this, if one of these homes is demolished, for example, you have to keep in mind that anything that's permitted by zoning is allowed to then go on that property. There are other amendments. This is not a standalone amendment. There are going to be several more amendments that we consider with respect to how we determine what the appropriate use for these properties are, but that is a standalone and separate issue from the historic conservation portion of your zoning ordinance. So with that, those are the amendments that are proposed. It's not, we're not getting rid of the historic conservation overlay. We're just trying to encourage what we're trying to actually encourage, which is more single-family homes in the borough. So, Steph, please.
I just want council to understand as well that this isn't just the administration looking at this and saying, this is working, this is not working. We've actually been approached by and reached out to the users that are being affected by this ordinance. I think that is part of our due diligence when we're going through these ordinances as well. So the feedback, in terms of what we're presenting tonight, there are developers involved, there are residents involved that have gone through this process or are in the process of going through this process. Ray, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add or clarify? Yes, I'm putting you on the spot.
I believe when I looked into this ordinance, it was problematic to begin with. I don't know whether the, it was presented correctly to council as to what the ramifications of such an ordinance could be, short-term and long-term. We've seen short-term ramifications over the year as to what could happen, what could be prevented from happening. And some of these things are beneficial to the neighborhoods that they, that are being opened. What it looks like long-term is, it may be very problematic if we continue down this road without making some adjustments to this. We have now people on staff that understand what the spirit behind this ordinance will be, so the decisions on these properties will be made based on the fact that we know what the spirit of it is, rather than what was presented originally.
So I think, to go off of what Ray is saying, our solicitor, our zoning officer, our BCO, council, you all had an intent in mind when this ordinance was requested to be drafted and presented. We're hoping that these amendments, which we'll be doing with all of our ordinances moving forward, reflect exactly what your intent was meant to be. If they're not, please let us know. This is the time. But I do think that from a user perspective, we are servicing the residents and developers, and so we need to keep in mind, as we're doing this, that you have an intent and a goal and a mission, and we can actually line those two up. The only other thing from Chris's perspective as zoning officer is the concept of the date of 1967. That's in the ordinance, so if we're talking about 50 years, that moves every year. So the proposal is to eliminate that from the ordinance. Thank you, Chris. And then the last one is just in terms of actually defining historic dwelling and what that's meant in this particular ordinance. I think there's, there's a difference between it being, and correct me if I'm wrong, historical in nature, as opposed to preserving single-family homes that have a historical significance now and in the future, moving forward with what you want your town to look like.
Right. That's correct.
Chris, is that accurate? Okay.
So with that, all we would like is the nod to continue working with staff in my office to get together an ordinance that we think will better effectuate what council is trying to achieve.
Any immediate feedback?
So I have some feedback.
Okay.
I am very pleased with our process with this ordinance that we wrote as our first ordinance. In staying in line with what we said during the comprehensive plan, and some of the concerns that even came out of the planning commission with the idea that we, they're concerned that this is a top-down approach. This is an example of how we wrote something with an intent. We tried it for a year. We asked the end-users how it was working and listened and solicited feedback, and now we're going back around. So we're in a cycle of continuous improvement, and that is in the spirit of our mission and our comprehensive plan. So I am proud of how this is working out, and I thank the administration for being able to help facilitate that cycle for this ordinance.
Thank you. Next steps would be actually drafting what an amended ordinance would look like for your review. I will tell you that we do also plan to bring in those same end-users to evaluate what that potential ordinance will look like, so that we have all seen it, we all know how it's going to work, and then we will advertise. We will ask you for authorization to advertise once that's ready to go. Advertise, and then put it on your agenda for an approval.
You'll need to have a public hearing on it as well.
Thanks, Chris. She keeps me in line with my public hearings.
Well, we don't want anyone to challenge it.
No, we don't.
No, we do not. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone from council have any questions? Are we all good on that?
Yeah, we're good.
I know you're waiting. I've been watching. We're almost through.
Last item is to consider approving Resolution 2018-10, which is establishing procedures for the enforcement of the facade restrictions contained in the deed dated November 16th, 2017, for the property located at 730 Fayette Street. We had Howe Properties here that previously, at the last month, that wanted to do work to the, slight work to the exterior and to the porch, portico. And what we found in that request was that we had no process to actually go through the process of approval from council to Howe Properties. So the resolution in front of you this evening is to categorize what would go in front of you for approval, what would not go in front of you for approval, and if it did need to go in front of you for approval, the process that Howe Properties and/or any owner of that building would have to follow.
We need a motion?
Are there any questions on the resolution that was presented in your meeting materials? No. So, yes, if you are prepared to make a motion and there's no questions, then yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Do I accept?
I'll second.
Am I allowed a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And just so council understands, you'll note in the ordinance, or in the resolution, I'm sorry, that we gave council, if there is something that comes up that has not been addressed in this resolution, it's been made flexible so that we can address it. So staff will keep an eye on everything that's coming through, and we know what you want to see and what you don't.
Okay. So we had two major events since we last met here. The first was our Memorial Day services, which I believe there were eight stops between here and West Contra Hocken. I just wanted to thank the police and fire police for all the hard work that day. I know George was out there in the middle of Fayette directing traffic as we kind of paraded along, so thank you. And then we had the Arts Festival and Car Show on Saturday, and it was all hands on deck as far as borough administration, police, fire police, public works, and of course, council support. So thank you all for making it an amazing day, and thank you, Ray, for public works. They're just everywhere, helping out. And somehow, Ray knew 10 minutes before the rain was going to start, so that was super helpful. And we look forward to continuing this now with a full year of planning for next June.
Ms. Barton?
No.
Ms. Sokolaski?
No updates tonight?
I only have one. I did neglect, when I made the announcement for AmerisourceBergen, that I would truly like to thank our administration and staff, because I am very much aware of all of the hard work that they put in to make that happen over the last, God knows however many months. And I would especially like to thank Ms. Checo and Mr. Peters for all of their hard work. Truly appreciated by all of us. Thank you.
I have nothing. Thank you.
I don't have anything tonight.
It's good? Public comment? You're on. Come on up.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for us.
My name is Mike Anson. I'm not going to tell you where I live, but I'm going to ask you to do a favor for me. I want you to raise your hand if you know where Thomas Lane is in Contra Hocken. Does anybody know where Thomas Lane is? One person? Okay. The problem is, I'm trying to stop a catastrophe. The top of Thomas Lane is soil. And the people, there's so much business in that area that they're parking across the alley lane, the lane. And if there's ever a catastrophe, that they had to get a fire truck or they, we're done because they couldn't get down. So I did, 10 days ago, I had 800 pounds of soil in my back of my truck, and I couldn't get it down the alley because there was a car parked there. So I had to go all the way around to the other street and back it in, and finally got it out. So I, "Baloney," I said. "I'm calling the police." The police came over, Corporal Fitzgerald, and he says, "Mike," he says, "I'm sorry to say, I didn't even know there was a Thomas Lane." He says, "I can't give this man a ticket." And I said, "Why?" He says, "'Cause Contra Hocken doesn't own the lane. It's owned by each property half..." Now, you've got to change the system a little bit. All I want, you're talking about money, all I want is a sign on Forest Avenue, "No Parking for the Lane," and one on the other- on, on the other end, and no parking to come in. Now, the problem is, it's called a lane halfway. The other half is called an alley, because the other half is paved. Now, it goes like this and down and up. Now, if you pave that, that section where the grass and the gravel grow, and everybody cuts their lawn and back, everybody does well on 8th and 9th Avenue, you can't, you can't, what I'm trying to say is, you can't pave that lane, because when the rain comes, the poor people on 8th Avenue, all our sellers get flooded out. So, we're happy with that. It's a nice lane, you let your dogs run back and forth, but you can't pave it. But you can't block the lane from emergency equipment going down there. It has to be open on both sides. If there was some kind of catastrophe, they're, they're done for, because you can't get down. You can get down off of Forest, you can get down off of Maple, it'd be fine. But you cannot stop, you've got to stop the people from parking in, in the, in the entrance of Thomas Lane up on, on the street.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I haven't been up on Forest recently. I was only up on the Maple End limits. Is there a curb cut there?
No. There's no curb, there's a curb cut on, on Maple Street.
But there isn't?
But there's no, it's all, it's bricks put down, bricks, bricks put down. Now, all I need is a sign saying, don't park here. And on the other end, don't park here.
So, are you talking about no parking out on a public street or within the alley?
No parking, no parking in that alleyway entrance.
So, we can't do that, that, oh, in the entrance, okay.
Well, yeah. So, they can't, they park there, nobody can get down.
Now, do they park on the public street or within the alley?
Well, the problem is, there's too much congestion there, and they're going around, they see a spot, they park at it. But it's a bad spot.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You see, you can't get down for any emergency. People use it to go up and down, to haul things in the back of their yard, so they don't have to wheel and barrel down through the street. But just, if, if anything ever happened, you couldn't get down that street, the fire trucks, the ambulance, the police couldn't get down.
Lieutenant Matts, Mr. Sokolowski, is this something that you guys could look at and come back and, and give us a report on what our options are?
Sure, I think one of the problems probably is, you know what it is, Mike, because you live there, we know what it is. It's not hard to distinguish for someone who's not familiar with the area, that that, it's not somebody's lawn or something like that that you park them in front of instead of, and then it's way, right? You will look at it. We'll look at it.
Okay. I've been here 50 years, and I'm going to put another 50 in. So, get me my signs.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
So, anyone else for public comment this evening? Oh, here they come. Good evening.
Want to go first?
I don't care.
Good evening. My name's Mark Rain, 418 East 9th. I'm also the local soapbox derby director, and we're gearing up. If everything goes the way I think it's going to go, we're going to have like 51 cars this year.
That's awesome. Congratulations. That's all those children we don't have back in the borough, is that correct?
What's that?
Where did all the kids come from?
Oh, yeah, well, there is a lot of kids from this borough.
I'm sure there are.
A lot of new kids, which is good.
Great. I appreciate that.
Do you have a car ready for me?
Go ahead, Mark.
Anyway, reason I'm here is, I talked to Cully earlier about parking on East, or yeah, East 8th Avenue by the Masonic Lodge across from the Getty Station. If it's possible the morning of the 4th, if we can put some new parking signs up there.
Right.
So, we can park, I have a trailer to park there and also bus.
If we could do it on the 3rd.
Right, okay.
The 94. I believe we did discuss that with the police.
It is already taken care of.
Okay. All right, good. Okay. And I have a meeting set up with, what's her name? I forgot her name. She just called me.
Pete Cosman?
Yeah, next Tuesday after work to discuss everything. So, everything's going good.
That's great.
Appreciate your support every year.
When was the last time we had turnout like that, a sign?
I'm thinking maybe a couple of years ago, we were close to over 40, so.
I think because it's on Wednesday this year.
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people don't go away for that week, and that's usually we get a big draw, so.
Right.
So, does that number count my recruits?
Yeah, I already heard, extra two you got recruited, so.
Five.
Five? Oh.
Five?
Okay. I only know of the other two, so I'm sure Ralph's got them hidden somewhere.
I just talked to Bobby today. We have another thing going.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Any else?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
If you need anything else, just let us know.
Okay. I had two other things on a different subject. Doing a presentation for the Marywood Park House in the, the community center. I was wondering, as I'm looking at their cost thing, they didn't have anything in there for any hidden unknowns. You're renovating, excuse me, you're renovating an existing building. They didn't open, they didn't open a wall or anything. They talked about taking two walls down in the, in the existing building part of the community center.
Right.
Is that a load-bearing wall that they're just going to knock down? It's, they seem to miss that.
John, they've done, they've had engineers and architects in the building. It's not just them that's doing the presentation. They've done walks-through, they've done evaluations, they've met with staff. We've had staffholder meetings, stakeholder meetings. So, I, we'll note your concern.
It's just the thought they...
Yep, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Stinking ahead, thank you.
And then, on the road program?
Mm-hmm.
The rain gutter in the front of my house comes out and interfaces with the road, but it interfaces partially below the road. And I can't, I can't raise the rain gutter because at that point, it'll be above the grass. So, I don't know if you had looked at any of that when you were looking at the, at the road program.
So, we did take a look. Again, we were using Google Maps area, but it was just like, as the street was driving through. We did notice there's a lot of roads where the rain started coming in, or even some of the plates that were over the driveway. So, we do have some allowances in there for roadway leveling to try and account for how we need to work in any drains or roadway edges. So, I don't know your item specifically, so we can talk about that, but we did include some allowances for that kind of work.
Okay, I could talk to you afterward. Okay.
That's not unusual conditions.
Yeah, no, it's just...
Because the, the mill and overage kept on getting higher and higher, so it's not unusual.
Yeah, because the water does actually collect in the middle part of my rain gutter there. So, okay.
Any more public comment? We've enjoyed.